Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, American Commission. This will serve as the work session for December the 12th, 2024. And as always, we're gonna have the city manager, Mr. Charlie Davis, to lead us through it. Mr. Davis?
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, first item is item one, a review of the November 25th, 2024 meeting minutes, and those will be found on page four if you need to review them.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Consent? Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mr. Mayor?
Pro temp.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey? Next item?
Okay, the next item is, uh, item two, found on page 13. This is to ratify the memorandum of understanding between the cities of Coffey County and the Coffey County government. Um, this is kind of cleanup, uh, uh, from the hurricane unit of county, uh, during the decision, we made a decision for the county to do all the pickup for the cities of Coffey County and Coffey County itself. Um, but we had to have a, uh, IGA, an intergovernmental agreement. So this here is just a cleanup, a document to, uh, issue the inter, uh, IGA for the, for the cities, um, to participate with the county in the debris cleanup from the hurricane hurricane.
We were all aware of this. Uh, I would say consent. Ms. McNeil? Ms. McNeil?
Uh, okay, so, yes.
Consent.
Consent? Would you say in consent, Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Next item?
All right, continue on with the hurricane cleanup. Uh, far as the debris removal, um, with the IGA with the county, it is just for the cleanup of, uh, the trees, um, and C and D and, and that type of debris that's on the right of way. Uh, in some of our parks, like, you know, if you notice that Roundtree and Wheeler and Eastside and stuff, uh, there's a bunch of stumps in there. So, uh, for the cities that wants to clean up their parks with the stumps, uh, we have to, um, uh, amend that contract to allow for the stump removal. And so their stump removal is a hundred and eighty dollars per stump, and that includes getting a stump, hauling it off, and then filling each hole with dirt. And so I'm proposing that we extend that contract to cover up all the debris, uh, stumps inside of our parks and on city property.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Yes, sir.
Good with consent?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Good deal. Next item?
Uh, the next item's item four, found on page 23. This item here is the approved, to seek approval, the resolution to extend the tax bills until February 1st. Um, that's kind of already, this is kind of already done, the county's already issued this, but this is a cleanup document from the storms perspective. Uh, we're given extra sixty days without penalties to allow people to, uh, pay their taxes, um, penalty free, and we're asking to y'all to approve that resolution extending the taxes until February 1st.
Okay. Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir. Um, I agree with this.
Consent?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Next item?
All right, next item's item five, found on page 27. Hold the first reading to amend the local ordinance regarding the position of the city marshal in code enforcement division for the city of Douglas, Georgia Henderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we're here before you tonight to hold the first reading, like city manager said, of the, um, ordinance amendment. Uh, basically in the ordinance, we are repealing back, um, any law enforcement divisions, the, uh, responsibilities that is associated with the code enforcement department. We are also, um, looking to amend and delete any reference to city marshal or marshal's office and change to the code enforcement divisions. And in your agenda, you can see all the different, um, chapters of the ordinance that will be changed. Um, if you follow it on the next pages, we tried to make it easy for you to read. The blue represents what we are deleting, uh, redacting from the ordinance, and the red is the changes that we plan to make. So, um, if you all okay with this, we'll move it forward, um, for the first reading tonight.
Mr. Taylor, your department leads through it.
Uh, we don't have to do a consent, I would just move forward.
You move forward.
Move forward.
Carry it forward?
Yes.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Mr. Paul? Carry it forward.
Mr. Bailey?
Carry it forward.
Good deal. Next item?
All right, next item would be item six, found on page 33. Discuss appointing, filling six expiring terms on a World War II flight training base committee, Georgia.
Okay, um, upon the recommendation of the flight training, uh, base committee, we recommend tonight that you reappoint, um, six expiring terms to the committee. That would be Mr. Andy Von Adore, Mr. Carl, Dr. Carl McDonald, uh, Mr. Donald Parsons, Mr. Edward Coleman, Georgia Henderson, myself, um, Mr. Thomas Smith, um, to another three year term effective January the 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent.
Mayor?
Pro Temp?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Next item?
Thank you.
Um, next item's item seven, found on page 35. Discuss appointing, filling of two expiring terms on the Downtown Development Authority, Georgia.
Thank you. Upon the recommendation of the Downtown Development Authority, uh, we seek to reappoint Mr. Brian Norris and Mr. Jeff Hennessy to serve another three-year term, um, effective January 1st, 25 to December 31st, 2027.
Mr. Taylor, your department leads through it.
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent, also here.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Next item?
Next item's item eight, found on page 37. Discuss appointing, filling of two expiring terms on Historic Preservation Committee, Georgia.
Um, upon the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission, we seek to reappoint Ms. Melissa Rau and Ms. Darlene Salazar to serve another three-year term, effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027. And I would like to say, um, that was their recommendation. Unlike the other committees, we did receive another application from Kevin Ingram, who also wished to serve on the Historic Preservation Committee. I have given you the, um, request of the HPC, but I don't know if the commission is in favor. If you are of the recommendation, we can move at consent, but if not, then I guess you have to take it forward to vote on it.
Mr. Taylor, your department, you just through it?
Ms. Henderson, you talking about add him to the?
The HPC wished to appoint the two that's currently serving for another term.
And then one that?
But I have to disclose to you all that we did receive another applicant, but we only have two vacant seats. So, we're asking to reappoint the current ones serving.
The ones out consent?
Yes, sir.
Consent? Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent, also.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Flatter.
I'm good with the consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey? Thank you. Next item?
Next item's item, um, item nine, uh, found on page 41. Discuss the appointing, filling of four expiring terms on the Keep Douglas Beautiful Committee.
Okay, um, a recommendation of the, uh, Keep Douglas Beautiful to reappoint, uh, Ms. Courtney Dorsett, Ms. Anitra Williams, Mr. Mike Bazell, to another three-year term. Um, Will, William Thompson, um, he is one of the, uh, board members with an expiring term. He does not wish to continue serving, but we do have another applicant, um, Kayla Solomon, who wishes to fill that seat, and that is the recommendation of the, uh, Keep Douglas Beautiful to appoint her, those four.
Again, Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Consent? Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent, also.
Mayor Pro Temp? Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey? Next item?
Next item's item 10, found on page 45. Discuss appointing, filling two expiring terms on the Douglas-Coffey County Planning Commission, Georgia.
This is the last one for tonight with all the committees. Um, it is the recommendation of the, uh, Plant, Douglas-Coffey County Planning Commission that we reappoint Mr. Johnny Deems, um, for another four-year term on the, um, planning commission. Uh, Mr. Kevin Kepler, he no longer wishes to serve on that committee, and we would like your permission to continue to advertise, and staff also plans to reach out to the Board of Education to try to get someone from that entity, uh, with representation on the committee.
So, we have to carry that forward for the advertising, but we also have to take action on that one?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Carry it forward, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Temp? Mr. Paul?
Carry it forward.
And Mr. Bailey? Better carry that forward. Next item?
Uh, next item's item 11, found on page 47. Uh, discuss the policy for rebuilding homes on original foundations after the natural disaster, Georgia Henderson.
Um, as you all know, we, uh, our community suffered greatly, um, um, from Hurricane Helene. As the community seeks to rebuild, staff, we're coming before you tonight to seek your direction and approval of a in-office, uh, policy that we can implement as people come in to request permits. What we're proposing, um, because we know we have different neighborhood zones, our 12, our 15, our residential mix, what we want to do is that, um, we adopted our Unified Land Development Code in 2011, so some of the homes already existed in those neighborhoods. They may not meet today's current development sto- uh, standards for as the size. So what staff would like to do is give those people, um, who lost their homes, uh, who that was totaled out due to Hurricane Helene, an opportunity to rebuild back on that same footprint. Um, that's the first choice. Um, if they alter any way to try to go smaller, we're not seeking to approve that. They will have to go by today's development codes. The third thing is, um, that they, um, if they seek to alter, they will have to go by today's, uh, development codes, and also they will have to get a permit to rebuild back on the, on that same footprint, or to deviate from it. Um, we didn't want that to be, just be our decision, so it's a temporary policy that we, simple policy, that we just want to get them to sign so we can properly pu- publicize and let people know what the protocol would be as they start rebuilding, and we can start pushing that information out.
Is there a recommended time limit, since you said temporary?
Well, that could be up to this commission. I don't know if we want to give people two years, a year to rebuild. Um, just myself talking personally with people is challenging. Some people are still in the stages of hearing from their insurance adjusters, um, trying to get, um, estimates on the property to get adjusters out, to get contractors who are not overly booked just to come and do the work. So, I don't know if we can start with the two years.
Well.
Unless you all want it to be less.
My comment would be is this right here, if we le- leave it open, and then maybe on a year, let's revisit it, just see if there's a time limit to be on it?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, uh, we have to carry it forward.
We carry forward, mhm. We carry forward, I agree with you, let's leave it open for a year.
Do you have to carry it forward?
Mr. Taylor, carry it forward?
You don't have to get, do you or do you not? We can agree on it, okay?
I mean, they consent if they want.
Yeah, you can consent it.
You consent this?
Yes.
If you make a recommend- if you make a recommendation of what y'all want, and y'all consent to it, then that's... Can I say one thing? And I don't want to muddy the water, uh, right here, but you know, the outside of the state initiative wants to come here and build houses?
It's nine hundred square feet.
They're wanting, you know, they're wanting to do, um, the container houses, and it will be around nine hundred square feet. Um, that would be a little different than this thing here, so whatever decision y'all make here tonight, if y'all gonna consider them coming, because they want to build about 12 houses in our community. Um, that will be in addition to this, to this variance. I don't know how, um, y'all want to handle that, but they are wanting to do about ten or 12 houses here. Um, and it will be, uh, uh, unique housing, um, and it will be a small footprint, uh, type house, so y'all have to either bless that or not bless that, you know?
Ms. Henderson, so you say that the maximum is 1,100 square feet, you know, that, you know, the policy that we have now?
No, sir. Each, um, zone, residential area carries a, uh, minimum structure size with it. For instance, if it's, uh, R15, the minimum size of the structure has to be 1,500 square feet. If it's R12, 1,200. Um, so it just gonna depend, but if the home, the, the original home that was there prior to Hurricane Helene was smaller than what would be allowed today, that's why we want to be able to prove to allow that resident to rebuild on that same footprint.
But that'd just rebuild the houses that, that took a total loss.
Yes.
So, we're trying, what would you, we're saying? Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Taylor has to go.
Uh, I got one more question. Now, how does that affect what Charlie's talking about with the people that wants to come in and help out and build those type of house?
Well, if, if the commission is in favor of it, and, and you allow it, like city manager said, it would be part of a variance tied in with this policy for temporary for the 12, um, container houses. We can go back and amend the policy, if you all approve it and add that in here, that we allow those. I don't know what neighborhoods, but if y'all are open to that idea, it would matter. If, because we got different residential neighborhoods. Is that what you're proposing? Do we all, do we know which areas?
No.
It may be, uh, any of the residential.
During their initial assessment of whether, since some of them inside the city, some outside of city limits, they're, they're in their initial gathering. So two things are, one, you can act on this policy here by itself tonight, or y'all can table it to the next meeting, if y'all want to talk about it then. Um, but then, just keep in mind that we may be bringing something back later, as soon as they develop their game plan, that may be exactly like this, or totally, totally different or whatever, so.
So do y'all want to merge it in and bring it as a separate agenda?
So, let, let me hear what the rest of the council says.
Okay, yes.
Are you okay, you just gotta discuss?
Yeah, I mean, as far as me, just saying, I say let bridge it in with what we, uh, got now and everything, because we don't want to miss out on any opportunity to, you know, put somebody in a home, you know?
I agree. Ms. McNeil, your comment?
Yeah, I guess, um, and I know there's, is this going in one certain, certain area of ta- of town because of square footage?
I mean, and what Georgia's talking about would just be whatever zone you're in, if you had a 100 square foot house, or you got a 10,000 square foot house, whatever you had prior to the storm, you could re- rebuild on the same footprint at that same size. So it just sets it back to what it was before the storm. What we're talking about, what we're talking about is these people come in and, and want to, uh, rebuild somebody. They would basically scrape everything off the lot, start over from fresh, but their design is a smaller type footprint housing or whatever, so, um, um, and so, and that's just, you know, if, if they're going to build houses, they, that they build on smaller footprints, because that's just what way they're set up, set up to build. And that could be in R12, R15, or, or, or M, whatever it is. Um, and, and so that, so, um, I mean, I just think, me personally, I probably need to act on this first.
Exactly.
And then let them, let, let them get their game plan together, and then we present that, and it fits wherever it fits, or don't fit.
I agree, I agree, that we need to act on this, and then let the 900 square foot homes be.
I'll come back to you, Mr. Taylor.
Totally, so.
Come back to me. Mr. Gal?
So basically, well, the idea here is we want to preserve the current character of that neighborhood, so when things are rebuilt, they're at the same size and keeping with the, the rest of the neighborhood as it's already is on, correct?
Not per se with this policy that I started out with. Um, because if, if we keep with the today's development standards, some people may not be able to build that same size house back. But because of the natural disaster, we want this policy to give them that opportunity to build on the same footprint, like if it was R12, so it's 1,200 square feet, the house may be being 1,0100. We won't allow them to build that same house back. That was, um, along the style that was in the neighborhood before.
I'm sorry, did you say, W A and T want, or will not? What, what were you saying there about rebuilding it to the same size? We want them to build the same size, or?
We want to, we want to give them the opportunity to build the same size that was originally there. Yes, sir.
Mr. Paul?
I'm in favor of, uh, allowing them to, uh, rebuild the same house, uh, the same size. Uh, would that, the other, or the other company that's coming in, that we're talking about doing later on down, down the road, would that delay, if we were to, to, uh, discuss that later on?
No, no.
Would that delay? Okay, all right.
I'm in, I'm in favor of keeping it clean, let's deal with this recommendation tonight, and we'll deal with the other when it comes up.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Taylor, you good dealing with this, just?
I, I just wanted to say, um, if, I'm good with it, but I was, my biggest concern was that for the ones that maybe not financially able to go back with the same structure that they got, that maybe due to finance and all, they might have to go to a smaller, but then Charlie brought that up, and we're looking to that, we're, right now, we can go with what we got.
All right, so we'll go back through. You want to put that on the consent?
Put it on consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Okay, and I'm not sure either, mayor, I'm just, uh, this is gonna be.
Talk it out.
Yeah, well, uh, again, uh, folks are collecting insurance checks for some of these.
Some of them don't have insurance.
Sort of, that is the word, that's what I was about to say. And then, um, some of the, some of them don't have insurance on it, I understand. Some of them are getting, um, other volunteers to rebuild for them and having them rebuild, uh, a church, by churches and others that are coming in, so, um, mayor, I think we need to kind of address one thing at a time here. And, um, so I, I will say, I'm with Mr. Bailey on this one.
What?
I'm with Mr. Bailey.
You're just dealing with this one issue?
Right.
So you're good with consent, or you want to carry it forward?
Yes, no, I'm goo- I'm good with the consent on this one thing.
One item?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
I'm like consent with the 2011, uh, code.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Uh, the next item is, uh, item 12, found on page 49. Discuss the date change for the upcoming meeting. Uh, we're asking, since most of us gonna be at the GMA convention in January, we're asking us move the Monday, the January 27th meeting to Tuesday, Jan- January 28th.
Anybody have any conflicts with that?
No.
I'm good on the 28th. You good? Mr. Taylor?
I'm good.
Ms. McNeil?
I am good, yes, thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp? You're good? Mr. Paul?
I'm good with it.
Huh? I'm good with it. Mr. Taylor? We're good on the 28th. All right, let's run back through it. You gonna put that on the consent, Mr. Taylor?
January 28th, on Wednesday.
Yeah. You good with consent on the 28th?
I am, I'm sorry.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
And I'm good with it too, yes.
Good. Mayor Pro Temp?
I'm good.
Mr. Paul?
I'm good with it.
And Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
That's good. All right, good to go. Next item?
All right, next item's item 13, general comments. We have two, uh, citizens of, um, uh, asking to appear before y'all tonight. The first is, um, Larry Neesmith.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forgive me. I'm in a rush, I'm in a rush, I'm in a rush. Larry Neesmith, 877, MJ McClellan Road, Douglas, Georgia, 31533. Approximately 10, 12 years ago, I can't remember exactly what the date was, but after speaking with our city attorney, Mr. Jerome, we came up with the campaign, see something, say something. Where here in Douglas, Georgia, citizens have 36 minutes a year to say something. 36 minutes out of the whole year, do we get a chance to come towards this plan to say something? That's three minutes. Well, not only am I gonna say something because I seen something, I'm gonna do something. I want to present to the mayor, a couple of missile Arizona police department policy on excessive force, and I want to present to our city police chief, a couple of missile Arizona police. Now, within that, I think that the city of Douglas should look into adopting. It falls completely upon the grand verse corner, and our city manager, 85, our city commissioner, my government can go over themselves and look at. And what that does is not only protect our citizens, but it protects our officers as well for excessive force. Some of you may or may not know, we have a police officer that is now currently being investigated by the GBI for excessive force. He has currently been investigated now for over two weeks. We had an outside agency to come in and handle the case for us. I came to the board last meeting, and I asked our commissioners and mayor, chief police to look into this for us. Now, we wonder why our citizens don't say anything? Because we only have three minutes. By the time we drive up here, fill out the forms, come up here, our time is up. We can't say nothing, we don't want to say anything, it's a waste of time and gas to come up here. We need more time to tell you these things. Okay? Things going on, we're not seeking for attention, but we want to bring attention to you of what's going on. We don't have the news source to put everything out. Facebook is not a source of news. This commission board is our new source. We need for you guys to come with us. We need to come to you and feel safe and confident that we can bring these things to you to make change happen in our city. We want to feel safe, we want to support our police officer. I think we got some of the best officer in the whole state. I really do. I think we got an excellent police chief. But when we get a bad bunch of apples, we don't get rid of the whole bunch to get rid of that bad apple. And that's what we got to do. What we got to do it the right way. Yes, it takes investigation, but once we notice what's going on, we know we want to see something, we say something, we do something. Douglas, I'm doing something.
Thank you.
Uh, the next person to, uh, address the council is former commissioner, Contay One Durham.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's good to see y'all again. It's good to be here.
Yes.
Um, I just had Mr. Neesmith, he booked off that, and, um, I just wanted to say that, um, I'm really coming to appear for, I live, my address is four ten Park Avenue, Douglas, Georgia, and, um, I come to speak on behalf of the citizens. Um, we've been having a lot of shooting and a lot of stuff going on in our neighborhoods, and it's happening around our, our, our elderly, our youth. And that, ma- as a matter of fact, it's happening around our youth, around the time they get out of school. And a lot of people are, they have concerns, they have, you know, complaints about it, and they want to say about the policing and other things that they could have at those, you know, those facilities, which I don't know what they're doing at those facilities, I know what they're doing, but I don't know what, you know, funding they may have at those facilities and stuff like that. But still, at the same time, we all want our children to be safe, we want our elderly people to be safe and everything. So, we may need to beef up our policing around those zones that may can't afford, you know, officers to sit there all day, or whatever. And also, um, also, Mr. Neesmith, he, um, addressed the issue about the, um, officer that was on, um, on administrative lead, but I think it was so quick for everyone to put the accident on, on, on the, uh, Facebook, on the W A L B, on the other outlets, but you didn't hear anything about the, about the investigation about, about what happened to the young man with excessive force. We didn't hear nothing else about that, and I know it's, I know they had to do, you know, call Josephine and all this and that, but still, at the same time, we didn't get nothing about that, we didn't get no updates about that, and I felt like that should be, that should be owed to the community, because that's somebody's child, and that's somebody's, and he is a citizen of the city of Douglas. We don't know his mental capacity, we don't know what he went through, we don't know anything, but still, at the same time. But at that, with that being said, I'm standing here to congratulate my successor, which is, um, Mrs. Brenda Henderson Moore of Douglas, Georgia. This lady has played a great part in my life, from my youth pastor, all the way up to Jerome. And I thank her for her wisdom, and I thank her for her willingness to run for this office, and my hats go off to her, and I want to congratulate her. And that's my three minutes, thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Uh, just one city manager update, and that's just to remind y'all, for those, it's going to be in the parade tomorrow. You know, we usually have it on Saturday, it's on Friday this year, Friday the thirteenth, so what could go wrong? Um, um, it's, the parade starts at seven o'clock, so anybody that's going to be in the parade need to be lining up between four thirty and six, uh, so just a reminder on that. Uh, that's everything, Mayor.
Excuse me, George, do I have a good dinner? At all? Okay, good deal. Alright, is it okay to adjourn and go directly into the meeting? Yes, sir. It's okay? It's okay to adjourn and go directly into? Alright, good deal. You okay with that, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Alright, good deal. We stand adjourned of the work session. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the city of Douglas, Mayor Commission, this will serve as the regular meeting for December the twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The next item on the agenda is the invocation. Mr. Taylor?
Let us pray. Lord, I thank you for life, I thank you for a day I've never seen before. Lord, I thank you for my health, I thank you for my right mind. Lord, as we come today, I pray for the city of Douglas, I pray for the people that work for the city of Douglas. I pray that you give them strength, give them courage, give them knowledge, give them understanding to run the city of Douglas. Lord, I pray that for those that are sick, that you, uh, heal their body, give them strength, and let, let them know that you is the way, and there is no other way, just have a little faith in you, you know, and everything will be alright. Lord, when you do these things, we'll give you the honor, we'll give you the glory, in your son named Jesus, amen.
Amen. Next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. For everybody that is able to stand, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may proceed, excuse me. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda.
So, second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, item. Actually, this is the wrong, this is the wrong one. The oath of office should be after.
You must have the, you must have the old version.
Have the old.
Here, you have, uh...
You have a new one?
It's the same way, no, it's just like yours.
Okay. Good deal, alright, sorry about that. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. As always, we'll have our city manager, uh, to read off those items that were placed on the consent agenda for transparency.
Uh, Mayor Council, we have ten items coming over on the consent agenda, and as stated, I'll read those off. Uh, the first item, um, is approval of the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Next was item two, um, ratifying the memorandum of understanding between the cities of Coffin County and the Coffin County government. Next was item three, approval of the Hurricane Helene stunt, stunt removable contract with the Southern Disaster Recovery Group. Next was item four, approval of a resolution to extend the tax bills until February first, twenty twenty-five. Next item was item six, approval of appointing and filling the six expired terms on the World War Two Flight Training Base Committee as discussed in the work session. Next was item seven, approval of the appointing of the two expiring terms to the Downtown Development Authority as discussed in the, um, um, work session. Next was item eight, approval of the appointing and filling of the two expiring terms on the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, as discussed in the work session. Next was, uh, item nine, approval of appointing and filling of the four expiring terms on the Keep Douglas Beautiful Committee as discussed in the work session. Uh, item eleven, from the work session, approval of the rebuilding of the homes on the original foundation after the natural disaster, um, as we discussed in the work session. And the last item was item twelve, uh, approval of the meeting change from a Monday, um, fir- on January twenty-seventh to Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, and those are your ten items.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion for the items placed on the consent agenda.
Remove. Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is work session items brought forward for discussion. Mr. City Manager?
We have two items coming over, uh, from the work session. The first item will be item five, uh, that was found on page twenty-seven, was to hold a first, um, reading to amend the local ordinance regarding the position of the city marshal and code enforcement division for the city of, uh, Douglas, Jerome.
Alright. Build our name by the mayor and commission the city of Douglas, Georgia in regular meeting, assemble in pursuit to lawful authority thereof, ordinance is amended to delete any reference to city marshal or marshal's office and replace with code enforcement division, and our code enforcement supervisor, and our community development director. Offer reference first time in a regular meeting of the mayor and board of commissioners of the city of Douglas, Georgia on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and you'll have a second read and take action on this ordinance on December the twenty-third. Thank you. Next item?
Uh, next item is item ten, uh, discuss the appointing and filling of two expiring terms on the Douglas Coffin County Planning Commission.
Um, upon the recommendation of the Coffin County Planning Commission, Douglas Coffin County Planning Commission, excuse me, we would like to, uh, recommend, uh, reappointing Mr. Johnny Deems for another four-year term, and with the vacancy, um, we would like, um, but from Kevin Kepler not wanting to re-serve, we would like to publicize that and come back with you at a later date for recommendation for reappointment.
I entertain a motion to make the approval of the one, and to continue advertising for the vacancy.
Remove. Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to swear in of Miss Brenda Henderson Moore to the seat of War Two Commissioner. Ms. Moore?
City of Douglas, Georgia, hold an office for the city of Douglas Commission. Aye?
Aye. Aye, Brenda Henderson, aye.
You shall always swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the commission of the city of Douglas, and that I will support and defend Charlotte hereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the city of Georgia and the United States of America. So, help me out.
Aye, aye.
Good to go. At this time, we'd like to congratulate, uh, Miss Brenda Moore, correction, Commissioner Moore, uh, to the council. It's been a minute since we've been at full capacity, and we are now at full capacity. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
I would like to say congratulations, looking forward to working with you the next four years, three years.
Ms. McNeil?
Great, welcome. Say that, I've known you a long, long time, so I look forward to sitting here beside you and, and working, assisting Douglas, so thank you.
Mayor Prochey? Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Congratulations, I'm still learning myself, so, we learn together.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
And congratulations, glad to have you on.
And as always, customary, Commissioner Moore, address your constituents.
Uh, giving honor to the spirit of God who's had on my life, and I wear my mama's hair because she had wisdom. I have on my neighbor's shoes because she brought me three pair, and all look fit. The hair reminds me that the people who've been before me, who are older, who survived through life, have some information that would benefit me and the city. And my shoes remind me that if I love my neighbor as myself, I will make decisions that affect them, so when I go up, I can bring them up with me. I pray that as you continue to pray for me, that I will al- always remember that in this season of my life, there were white, black, Republicans, and Democrats who came together to support me. Blow up my mind, in my head, thinking, God, why did you place this mantle on me? I did not know that Helene, the hurricane, was going to hit my city, but what I do know is I've always believed that we are stronger together. And I believe that together we stand, and divided we fall. I've always had that part of my, part of my, I'm trying not to cry, because this is serious, and what we're facing as a community, with the devastation we survive, we're gonna have to make some major changes, and it's gonna cost us to have to make some people feel offended, it's gonna cost us to have to come together and look at our people and their situation. I'm big enough and bold enough, and I'm mature enough to have to say the hard things, and I'm serious enough that if I have to dissent, I know how to say that as well as consent. I'm not a divisive person, but I'm a very fair person. Uh, my, my group of people that surround me come from all races. As I sit down, I want to remind everybody in the city that we are facing a holiday, continue to show love, we've lost a lot of people because of COVID, continue to wear masks, continue to do what you have to do to keep other ones safe. And to my Hispanic friends and students who voted for me, who put the word out that I was running because I taught them in school, Feliz Navidad. And to those of you who are Americans or United States, and you understand English, Merry Christmas, and I hope you have a Happy New Year.
Mr. Moore?
Okay?
Alright, as customary, uh, we have a duly elected official. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, and Commissioner Moore, that will be her first, uh, motion, okay? At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Stand adjourned.